I'll call it this evening's meeting to order. Please stand and recite the pledge allegiance with me. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, welcome everybody here tonight. Have a good meeting. I would invite anybody from the audience who would like to address the trustees to approach the mic. Seeing none, I'll move on to the approval of the minutes. We have two sets of minutes. I will entertain a motion to approve when ready.
Mr. Chairman, I'm in.
Okay, your second. Now, just an added order, is that for both sets?
Yes.
Okay.
Second.
There's a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right. Operate off your revised agenda, Carla. So, completion of the agenda. So, we're going, we've removed executive session A and B. And is there any revisions to the?
You added, you added one.
We added B.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right. You're right. I skipped. I removed executive session A and added executive session B. And is, are there any revisions to the consent agenda? Okay. Then I would take a move, a motion to approve the agendas as presented.
Still moved.
Second?
Second.
Second, discussion? Seeing none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, we'll move on to reports to the Board of Trustees and the Student Government Association. So Vanessa, you're still here. Glad to see you.
It's the last one.
Oh, we'll be sad, we'll be sad after this one.
And her understudy is right there.
Right there.
But I'll keep in touch and let you know what I'm doing up at Case State.
Should be Case State. I know, I remember that. Awesome.
Good evening, Board of Trustees, Mr. Chairperson and President Nolte. Tonight, we start off with International Club. They held their last leadership meeting on May 3rd and volunteered for the SGA's second annual carnival on the same day. And they also participated in the Cinco de Mayo Parade. Art Club did another mural enclosure at Ripe Park Zoo. And SGA held their second annual carnival by Lake Charles where students participated in various games and got a chance to win prizes. They also held their officer elections. And tonight, we have the 2018-2019 president. Linda Armandares is elected. If you could please stand up. She will be the new president. And with that, I just, I would just like to thank everyone. And I was glad to serve as the SGA president for this school year. And that's it.
We love you and miss you.
I miss you too.
But come by and visit anytime.
Okay, well.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Best of luck at Case State.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll go on to the trustees' report. Terry, would you like to start?
Well, thank you, but I don't have anything. Thank you.
Well, I'd like to repeat how proud I am of our student body. And this is an exciting report that we have begun to look forward to in our meetings about the leadership that the group has offered to the community. And that really makes me proud to be a part of Dot City Community College. And also want to comment about the Level One nurses being the number one in the state. And I believe the second level is number six, if I'm right, maybe number six. And the graduation rate for them at 96, that's wonderful. We've come a long way and we should rightfully be proud of that. And also the women's golf at number four. And the men are where?
Thirteen.
Thirteen. The women are four and the men are 13. We'll get them to work. But they have traditionally been very high. So we know it's out there and, and it's just a great thing to be a part of that. So I'm also very happy that we're talking about livestock judging team again. So I want to encourage you on that.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Florist Jean.
I've been spending quite a bit of time in the last couple of weeks on the allocation committee for United Way. And so I've been hearing about ways that organizations in our community depend on the college and coordinate with the college, such as the Crisis Center, which now United Way does not fund agencies, they fund programs. And the program they asked money for was for here at the college, for the Crisis Center to have an office here 20 more hours a week. Is that right?
That's right.
Okay. Didn't want to misspeak. Today, I heard from, an application from communities and schools and how their programs were trying to help young people who had no one in their family who's ever gone to college or for them to understand what it's like. And they visit here at the college once a month. She commented that she also takes students to other colleges. And the colleges that have a one-week camp invite kids to come to a free camp at KU, Case State, Pittsburgh, Fort Hays, that 100% of those students enroll. So I was wondering if that might not be an idea here, to have a camp if they're having that kind of turnout with 100% students. That was exciting to me, that we might implement something like that. That's my report, Chair.
Very good. Thank you. Florist Jean kind of stole my thunder a little bit, but you know, I really, really want to applaud, you know, the nursing program for the great strides and the great success of it for having. So my hats off to them and the ladies golf for having been forth. So we're moving on. That's all, Ed.
Okay, I wanted to congratulate our Child Care Development Center. I have a great nephew that attends there. And when they went to go to school for Ms. Diane's birthday or whoever it was above a grandma, that says a lot. So I applaud what we're doing for the community and the little people of Dot City. And second, I read scholarships for the Women's Chamber. And we read 30 scholarships. And out of those 30 scholarships, I would say a third of them wanted to come to our community college. That hasn't happened in the last couple of years. And now we're seeing more kids wanting to come to our community college. And they're top-notch kids. So I applaud everybody that's doing everything because it's right. We're doing something right.
Yeah?
Well, I've been looking into some of the financial things, as you all well know. And the help I got yesterday from the administrative staff was just outstanding, building me in a lot of things I needed to know and a lot of missing pieces. So I really appreciate the work that you've done to, to help me with that and understand all that.
I'd like to echo that. That workshop session was so helpful. And it really was. Well worth the time.
Well, yeah, I wanted to take my hats off to the staff and the trustees that were able to attend. I realize in the middle of the day, it's hard for everybody to attend, but we had a good turnout. And absolutely, it was a great, great workshop session. So when we get the board books, we'll continue to do so. And especially, reach out to me if you really, really see the need to have one with the content of what you're getting in the board book. So we can kind of, and maybe some of the questions that you're having, so that we can prepare staff ahead of time to answer such questions.
I got a lot of questions answered yesterday. I'm looking forward to the, the financial meeting we're having in June.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Next up, Dean Ryan in Austin, you have good words for us.
Yes, sir, hope so. Chairman Harshberger, Board of Trustees, President Nolte. I had mentioned in a couple of my written reports, made a reference to livestock judging team or program here at Dot City Community College. So I wanted to take just a few minutes and give a, give a verbal report. I'll start with a little background. It's probably been, maybe a handful of months ago, maybe three months ago or so, that Keith Thomas had come to me and asked me about livestock judging, what I knew about it, how I felt about it. And I said, well, honestly, I don't know how I feel about it. I know zero about it. So he had come to me, this is experience that Keith and both Dr. Nolte have from their time at, at Blinn. So they're well-versed in the, in the livestock judging realm. And trustee Hampton had already referred to, we, Dot City Community College has in past times had a livestock judging program, but I think it's probably been 15 years or so. It's been a while since we've had that program. But Keith had come to me and said, hey, let's, let's take a look at this, maybe rejuvenating one. He said, I've got some experience with it that, from Blinn, how do you feel about it? I said, well, I don't know a lot about it, but I'll tell you what, I'm on board. I'm willing to, to learn and excited about the opportunity. Because he was extremely excited about possibility of restarting that program here at the college. So what he had done, I have to give Keith the credit, he had made contact with an individual from Kansas State University. His name is Chris Mullenix. He is their livestock judge head coach. He actually has background at the community college level. He actually came from Butler County Community College. And Butler has one of the better programs not, not in this, I mean, the country. They've won national championships by the, by the handful. So he's now at Kansas State University, been there for several years, very successful. So Keith was able to get a meeting set up between him, a couple of his coaches, and then Keith and I. So we were, we went up there, we were there for several hours, just asking various questions about implementing a program, what would we look for in a, in a coach, what kind of time would it take to put a program together, what would we be looking at as it relates towards, to, to cost, things of that nature. Wonderful, wonderful conversation. And so I wanted to mention just, just a few things that I took away from that conversation. And then as I came back and visited with Dr. Nolte and a couple of other people here at the college about the possibility of a livestock judging program. And we do plan on bringing some more information back next month. I just wanted to give a quick overview of some of my thoughts and what I learned there. But I've come back with, with three things that I believe would be tremendous for Dot City Community College if we were to restart a livestock judging program here. One would be enrollment. I believe that a livestock judging program would up enrollment probably as soon as we were able to get it off the, off the ground. We'd be looking at approximately somewhere around probably 30, 30 students or so. And almost all of those students would probably enroll in our ag courses within our, as some kind of program within our, within our ag department. So I think enrollment. I think it really been to benefit the colleges it relates to, to enrollment. Two, historically or traditionally at Kansas State, even here, as I looked into some of the history of our livestock judging program here that we had several years ago, Butler County, wherever it might be. Number two, the kind of students that you bring into a livestock judging program are by and large some of your highest performing students. I mean, traditionally, they perform very well academically, they're positive influence on your, on your campus and on the, on the student, student body. So they bring a very good vibe, for lack of a better term, if you will, to the, to the campus. So I think that's exceptional. High-performing students do great in the classroom, do great on campus with students, staff, faculty as well, that's great in the, in the community. So I see that as a real, as a real positive. And then the third one is, I put the word here in my notes, competitive. After speaking with, especially with Chris, his experience, by and large being from the Kansas area, as many years as he's been coaching at Butler and then there at, at Case State and speaking to both of their coaches, they said, you know, you guys got some of the best talent in the, in the state, right there in your back, in your backyard, right there in southwest Kansas. And then being on the border of Oklahoma and Colorado. He goes, not only would you guys, you know, benefit, you know, from enrollment, he goes, you guys could have a program that not only your college could be proud of, but the community would take pride in and be proud of. He goes, you guys get put together with the right, right people, you could put something together that'd be one of the best in the, best in the, in the nation. So those were three takeaways that I was able to get from my time over the last couple of months, kind of traveling and visiting with, with people. And the possibility of bringing or reigniting this, to my understanding, we were relatively competitive even back, back then. So the possibility of bringing that back, getting someone in place, building this program again from ground level, if you will, bringing quality students to the, to the campus and building something that all of us can be proud of. I, I'm really excited about that opportunity. And we are, trustee Hampton, we're going to keep pursuing it. And I'll be back next month with, with some more information and a proposal for full disclosure. Any questions possible?
I do. So you said enrollment, approximately 30. Do you, like, I think we've seen with like our sports programs, we get a kid coming in in sports, we see maybe two people kind of follow along. Is that accurate? Do you, I mean, what do you, do you have any thoughts into that? So you get these 30, do you have ones that, that come along as well? Do you anticipate that?
Yeah, excellent question. So we, Keith and I did actually ask that question and we use, that we refer to athletics. Yeah, absolutely. You might get a girlfriend, a boyfriend, a friend that's in the program. It's like, you know, that's something I might want to get involved with and I'll come with you. So yeah, we're talking probably just 30 in the program itself, but that wouldn't take into account others that might, that might come along. Absolutely excellent, excellent point. We did speak to that. So we would definitely plan on bringing other students along by implementing that program other than what would be a part of the team.
And another?
Those hand in hand with rodeo.
Yes. Yeah, oh yeah, absolutely, rodeo.
Rodeo.
And just a side note, I visited with Gabe today. He's already signed 13 students, he's looking at 20. So I'm not stealing any of your thunder, Jake, sorry. But I was visiting with you this morning about something else. So doing very well on that front as well. Some of those, a lot of those students are ag students and no doubt having the ag, the livestock judging and the rodeo, we could build some real synergy, synergy there. Gabe's doing a great job.
Does, does the livestock judging, does that, you know, touch or lead to or connected with like, like meat judging down the road or anything like that?
Yeah, Dr. Nolte and I had had this conversation. So if we get the, and Case State actually recommended that, if we're able to get the livestock judging off the ground, which I believe we can, get that implemented, see some success there, that would be probably the next step in the evolution, if you will, is a, is a meat judging program. And once again, they're like, you know, you guys are down there and meat country.
Meat country.
So that would, he go, they go, that would be an excellent opportunity, once you got your livestock judging up and, up and running.
That'd be sure worth reaching out to National Beef and, and Carugill.
For scholarships.
Well, that, but just, you know, seeing what it is they need and input from them.
Okay.
And some, you know, some assistance on information.
Okay, excellent.
Okay. Anything else for Ryan?
Thank you, everyone.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. Dr. Cersei, you have an update from HLC.
Yes, sir. Be pleased to, from the Board, we had our visit, we got our team report, and of course, we can't really talk about it, not very publicly, because it's up, it's subject to change, is what it comes down to. Basically, until the Board of the HLC says how our visit came out, we're sort of somewhat limited what we can say. But we can say they, there were findings, that they have some findings in mind for us that the team recommended. There are nothing we weren't expecting, you know, the faculty qualifications, Armani situation, things like that. So they were really interested in those and had some very good advice for us if we can follow it. It's a very good recommendation what we could do. But because there are now, they changed the policy last September, actually, and they said, any school where a team recommends findings, they're going to extend the process. So basically, we have to get another report together. We have to actually go to Chicago and present it at the airport to the Institutional Actions Council. And what they've done is, it used to be you could ask for that and request it if you didn't like the team's recommendation. But now they've just decided, no, everyone should do it. So it's just much more even playing field and we, we don't over-penalize schools. It's all very even and done by the acting body. So I will tell you that we would have been happy with what the team recommended and probably a year ago, we would have said, yes, we'll sign it, we'll take that and we'll go on. But now, because of change of policy, we have to actually go defend ourselves, which is a good thing, because it gives us the opportunity to actually have a visit anew, is what they're calling it. In other words, any changes we can show, we make between when the team was here in April and when we go to the Institutional Actions Committee in now August, we can take credit for that. And if we can show evidence that we made changes in policy, or we finished another buzzer year with a balance, anything that counts to our favor, we can put on the table and it'll help us argue that we are even better than the team thought we were. So our liaison is confident that we have very good chance to improve the outcome. I think that's true. We could live with the outcome the team is recommending. So in some ways, it's good, it's just not what we thought we were getting, because like I said, last September is when they changed it. Our team chair was rather taken aback because he now has to go, I actually called him, I said, did you know about this? And he said, no. So he has to, fortunately, it's only 90-minute drive to Chicago for him, but he said, this is new for him. He's been in this business for 20 years as a team chair, and now he's got to go actually meet with us and he presents and we present. And we talk to the Institutional Actions Committee and we go from there. They will write a recommendation to the Board, which probably will be binding, although we still won't be able to talk about it, until the Board acts, which will probably now be October, before we really will have a public outcome. But we could have had a lot worse. The team chair did say that if we, if we had stayed where we were about last June from our report last June, we definitely would have been on probation. And I'm sitting, we're not facing, we don't seem to be facing that now, I will say that in public. So we've come a long ways, we've got ways to go, but we've got people who are really serious about working on the issues and have worked on the issues this last year. So that's a good thing. Any questions that I could try to answer?
That you're allowed to answer.
I'm allowed to answer. I'll try to bend it as far as I can, for you.
When we get that report, it will be something that we really can identify that we need to do.
Yeah. Well, I think the issues we already know, we can already work on the issues now. We have been told by a team, look, you have issue A, B, C, here's some recommendations. If we bite into those, and we are biting into those, it will not be a mistake. It will be a good thing to do, to show we're being constructive about being in compliance. And we're doing that. So it's not like we really have to wait, we just keep running now. And the further we can get and show we are by August, the better off we'll be and more likely we are to maybe even lower the team's recommendation. So that's what we're striving for. And that would be really good. If we actually end up with the team's recommendation, I'm comfortable with it. It's not that bad. Could have been a lot worse.
So Scott, so what I'm hearing, so we all, we all read their preliminary report and the findings and their constructive criticisms of things we need to work on. And so what I'm hearing you say is, is that we need to take action on those as immediately as we can and then present that to them when we go see them in August.
That is our opportunity to take, and I would try to take.
And so it's going to demonstrate, and I believe, you know, my hats off to you and, you know, the staff for really getting out in, out in front of this and working on this and seeing the things that we need to work on. I think you guys did a great job. I think, when talking to the HLC reviewers, that I think their intent was to criticize, but constructively say, hey, this is the things you need to work on, these are the things you need to do. And I think we've received some suggestions. And then, so we need to act on those here as promptly as possible, so that we can demonstrate that we're heeding their recommendations and taking and putting them in action. Correct?
Right, right. That's what they call institutional capacity. If we show great capacity to become adherent in full to all of their, all the criteria for accreditation and all the subcomponents, then that means we're more trustworthy to be where they could say, well, keep working on that and write us some reports, or maybe keep working on that and we will come visit you on a focus visit. You know, there's a lot of options they have that they could take.
Scott, what I'd like to do, if, if possible, is go ahead and give the rest of the Board. I know that, I know that Gary has it, the report. I'd like to, with a precursor on it, the preliminary report, just so they know what's going on, because they want to be as transparent as possible.
As long as I have. I think it's great that you could all have it and read it. Just remember that you can't tell anybody necessarily what it says, because it could change, plus and minus. So we have to keep it quiet.
But I think it's.
But you can know.
But I think it's a great education for our Board to know what, what was, and y'all, it was really a very good report comparatively. And we complimented our liaison about what a wonderful job they came in and did. And I think she was very happy about what they did. And so really seriously, most of it, we complied to most of it. So, you know, you've got five, five categories, and if you've been reading about another college, it was pretty bad.
Yeah.
And they fought it. You don't ever fight those things. You go ahead and say.
We're fighting to be in compliance, not fighting to change compliance. We want to meet those standards.
Right. So we're, I think it's real important, so let's go ahead and get the report out to each and every one of you. It's just that, this is a great time, this is a great venue to say, look, this is, this is a preliminary.
Yeah.
It's not the final, but we'll, we'll keep you posted on what's going on.
Yeah, and as you read it, you'll find that there are three things I can say, is met, met with concerns, and not met. I will tell you, we didn't get any not met, which is good, because another college we could name did get not met. So we have, we have four areas we need to work on, which actually may be more than four areas, it's just that they all fall within those four areas. There's, there's a lot of things we can work on that could really help us. A lot of, a lot of areas, they were like, this is good, 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 check, yeah, great. We want to get them all like that.
Any, any, any questions? Seriously, from where we started last year, it really was, it's, it's, thanks God, it was, it was not where we needed to be.
Well, that's what the team chair, he was actually on the paper visit with our systems portfolio from last year, and he said, he was really worried for us based on that document. But then when we turned in the one in February, he said that was much better. And the team said, oh, yeah, definitely. We've come a long ways in a year. And so there was sort of a hint that if maybe we'd have had another year before the visit, but we couldn't, we were on the limit already, that we probably would have had a lot more things cleaned up and we would probably have been fine. But that's good. That means we're going the right way and we're serious about it.
You're always serious about your accreditation. That's, those are the things that can close a school the quickest.
Yeah. I mean, it's your, it's your federal financial aid, it's your state funding, it's credibility for your, it's everything.
Well, we want to thank you.
It's been fun. I don't know if I want too much more fun, but it's been fun.
I like to hear how you define fun.
Yeah.
All right. Anything else for Scott? Well, thank you, thank you very much.
Please get the reports to each, each and every Board member.
Okay, well, I'll send it. I'll send it.
Perfect.
Okay. Earlier on, I was remiss, we do have two visitors, so John Haas with Ransom Financial, sorry I didn't get to you earlier, but welcome, and Vincent Marshall from the Dot City Globe. So Vincent, welcome. So, okay, we'll move up to Board Action Items and A, Resolution Number 2018-05. And we do have a revised document on your desk, so we'll operate off that.
Good evening, John Haas with Ransom Financial Group out of Wichita. Larry was here last time, visiting with you about taking bids for the certificate of Lots of new faces on the Board as I was last here. And Veda, the beginning of June on my wedding anniversary, right up there. Running joke, you always have something for me to do on my anniversary. Nowhere else I'd rather be.
On your wedding anniversary?
Yeah. Tonight, there's, I'm not sure what your agenda reflects, but there'll be two actions that the Board will need to take. First action item is the bid for the COPs. You will review that and then approve that or not.
Okay.
And if you approve the, the bid, then you will approve the resolution that follows, authorizes the sale of securities and authorizes the Board Chairperson and Secretary to enter into all the other agreements associated with the financing. Now, I was in Fort Scott Community College last night, and I get to be in Dot City. Don't know why I didn't go to Colorado, I was in Missouri yesterday, I was just going to Colorado. Changes in regulations have made it more difficult to do small leases. SEC requirements inhibited banking institutions and municipal advisors like us to do our jobs like we used to do. Today, we only received one bid for the COPs. A few years ago, we'd get three or four with this. It's just a harder deal. I came in and I talked to Veda and I'm going to work, put Veda on my work. in and I talked to Veda, and I'm going to work, put Veda on my work team and see if we can go to Washington and see what we can do to fix this, because it's just not acceptable that we can only get one bid for small leases now. Locally, the government, particularly in Kansas, do lots of small leases, and regulations have been just too much. But what I hear from DC, well, we don't have Bob Dole anymore. So I don't know that they care that much about Kansas. But anyway, the bid that we did receive was from Central State Capital Markets. The average interest rate is 3.21%. I think, Veda, that we set our estimated lease payments were about 1,000 more than we'd anticipated. A combination of fewer bids and interest rates is going up. What I handed out to you is revised numbers. You want to take a look at, look at this. Sources of uses of funds, the lease amounts 570,000. Project fund is 542,025. Then the cost of issuance, now they're miscellaneous, $6,235. If that money is not used for cost of issuance, I actually don't think it is, but generally what happens, if there's a shortfall in money, it comes out of my fee. So I always try to add up a little bit more than we need to make sure that that doesn't happen too much anymore. If there's non-cost of issuance, then it goes into the project account. And if it's not even, not needed in the project account, then it would be used to make your first debt service payment. So that's the flow of funds. So then if you turn to table two, is the debt service payments that you'll be making. Average debt service is 80,957,000, but there is an annual trustee fee of 1,500. As the chairperson mentioned earlier, you have a revised resolution. The revisions in the resolution is that we always like to get drafts out so that the board can look at those prior to the meeting, but we haven't had the sale of securities yet. So once the sale of securities is completed, the information from the securities is added to the resolution and also added to the lease purchase agreement. So any questions about the bid, the debt service, sources of use of the funds for the resolution for me at this point in time?
So when you mentioned your 3.21% interest rate, that's with the fees and the trustee fee?
Now, that would be just the underwriters discount and the interest cost is the official calculation of the net interest cost. That's a defined calculation by the federal government that we have to comply with.
Gotcha.
So I would assume that the trustee fee might add another 10, 15 basis points to that, maybe.
All right. So that was the only change in the revision?
Right. It's just information about the bid. And mostly it was on the lease purchase agreement. This resolution authorizes you to approve.
Okay. All right. Thanks, John. Veda, did you have anything you wanted to add to this discussion? Okay. We discussed this at last month about going this route to fund this. Any more thoughts on it? Okay. I would need to, a motion to approve both the resolution and the bid.
If the chairperson, we call it for two separate votes, appreciate that.
Yes. Yes. Yeah. That's what, that was my intention. So I would move, I would ask to motion to approve the bid for the lease for eight years.
So moved. One second.
And a second. Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. And now vote for the resolution, number 2018-05. Do we have a motion to approve?
Still moved.
Okay. Second?
Second.
There's a second. Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Opposed, same sign. All right. Thank you, John.
Can I interrupt one more time?
Absolutely.
New federal regulations require that I get your signature now and note the time that it was signed, and I have to, when I get back to my office tonight, I have to fax it to the proper authorities.
And you have to note the time, is that what you said?
Yeah. The chairperson is there. So I'll be sending out an email that is created at 6:30.
Secretary?
I'm sorry for the interruption. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's good to see you all again.
Nice to meet you.
Well, happy anniversary.
Oh, well, that's next month.
Coming up, though. We won't see you for another year.
But it is 36 years, so thank you. Thanks again.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next item out of B, resolution 2018-04.
Okay. Every year, I bring you a resolution to designate a certain amount of the incidental fees to be used toward divisional scholarships. And we're asking for, let me get on the right page. We're asking for the amount not to exceed 700,000. Last year, it was 600,000, and this year, I'm asking for 700,000. This comes from student fees from all non-Ford County residents. We do not use any Ford County residents' fees for this purpose.
I have a question about that, Veda.
Okay.
It all goes in the same pot?
No. We have, it goes into, it goes, if it's a Ford County incidental fee, we have a line number for each one. Out of state, Ford County, out district, it all has its separate lines, and I only transfer from the non-Ford County. I do not transfer any Ford County fees into divisional scholarship.
The, why not?
Because I don't think that Ford County students should be paying for non-out-of-state, and these are all divisional, athletic divisional scholarships.
What is the Ford County fees used for?
It goes into the general fund, just to offset operations.
So they're paying for operations, and the non-residents are?
We don't use all of it. I mean, it's, that's not, I don't transfer all of it.
Well, why do we need 700,000?
Because your scholarships are going up.
How much? And how much, how many people do get scholarships, and how much are they-
Okay. This year, we had 376,000 go to Ford County. Those scholarships come right out of the general fund.
Yeah, but we're not talking about the 700,000.
We're talking about 650,000 out of divisional this year.
Okay, I'm sorry. On the 700,000, is that, is that divided between Ford and divisional?
No.
Okay. So the 300 and some thousand paid by Ford doesn't matter, right?
No.
All right. So we're talking about 700,000. How much is the average scholarship for, and how many students get it?
I couldn't answer that. I mean, we can, Steph, do you have any idea?
I would say roughly around approximately 874 students get scholarships. That was what we did in-
874 non-residents of the Ford County?
No, no, that includes every-
I'm talking about non-residents. That share out of the 700,000.
I'd have to, I'd have to run a different report for that one.
What do the scholarships pay for? Does it, books and tuition only? It's not housing?
A majority of them pay for tuition and books. We do have the presidential scholarship. It's an additional $500 for the students that have a 305 GPA or above.
None pays for housing or food?
No.
It's all books, tuition only?
Books and tuition.
But do all non-residents get a scholarship?
No.
What's the percentage?
I'd have to-
You have no idea?
Of the, I'd have to go look at the total students, and, I mean, and these are students that are full-time. Students have to be a full-time in order to receive the scholarship.
And isn't there a grade average involved too?
And there are SGPA's attached to the scholarships.
Well, there's no board policy on that, right? That's just something that the administration does not.
It's kind of a financial aid policy, because they are scholarships.
But if you get away with the fee entirely, wouldn't the students just be the same? Wouldn't it be, wouldn't it equal out?
I don't know what you're asking.
Well, if you're getting a, if you're getting a tuition scholarship, and your fees are the same as tuition as far as error rate, it's just a wash.
Incidental fees aren't the same as the tuition.
Well, I mean, whether it's closer. What's, what's the out-of-state or non-resident tuition versus the fees?
I don't have that with me. Do you, Steph?
I have the fees. I wrote those down. Ford County fees are the 40, and then out-of-county is 60, out-of-state is 62.
And there are tuition as well.
I didn't write that down, sorry.
But I mean, it's as close as it would be $500.
It's usually, yeah. I think it's like 30. Usually, it's about $10, $20 cheaper, I think, or about 30. Tuition?
Ford County is 30, and tuition fees are 40.
So out-of-county is 40, and out-of-state is 62.
It's true that we can't use any public funds for non-resident Ford County scholarships, right?
Except the law states that we can use incidental fees.
Well, what it states is you use a fee. Well, can you tell me the difference between the definition of tuition and the definition of the incidental fee?
No.
I mean, the definition of tuition is this. Student tuition means a charge made to and paid by students for the privilege of attending a community college and participating in its programs. What is the difference between an incidental fee and tuition, other than the name? There isn't. I mean, it's just a distinction without a difference. And we can't use public intuition, you would agree, is public funds.
Absolutely.
All right. So we can't use public funds to fund any, any scholarship outside of Ford County, right?
That's correct.
Get their public funds. Does that bother anyone? The fact that there's no difference? I mean, a rose is a rose by any other name.
Do all 19 do the same thing?
Oh, absolutely. That's why they changed the law to state that you can use fees for out-of-state scholarships. That's the way the law reads.
Yeah, but if it was a duck, and you decided to call it a cow, you still couldn't use the duck, right?
You know, as we're doing this, and I see what Terry's talking about.
I don't.
If you wanted to, if you wanted to say, "We're not going to charge any tuition. The only thing we're going to charge instead is $100 in fees, $100 per hour in fees." What Terry's saying, it's the same thing. You know, I mean, a per-hour charge seems to me as a tuition. You can call it a fee if you want, and we could say, "Well, we're the only college in Kansas that did away with tuition. We did completely away with it. But our fees are $120 an hour, credit hour, and the same amount of money is going to be generated, or more actually, with that number, but, you know."
Mr. Counselor, is there a legal definition?
Well, we've only been through this about 30 years with Mr. Malone.
Actually, actually, no, that was the judicial time, it's 2000.
How did you figure it get right there?
I think it's about 90.
But no, no one has been able to give me an answer, right?
Well, the difference is, is I've written several different times, is that the board determines what tuition is, and the board determines what the fees are.
You mean, you mean as far as the amount?
Yes.
But the board can't change, the board can't change the definition statutorily of tuition, can they?
No. Well, I don't, no.
I mean, it's a statutory definition.
Sure, sure. Just as fees are a statutory item that's listed in, what is it, 72?
203.
203. And so, so the, the difference is, is that the board makes that determination. This is what tuition will be. This is what we're going to charge for tuition. And this is what we're going to charge for fees. And under the law, you can use fees for those scholarships that you can't use tuition for because it's considered public funds.
But wouldn't you agree that they have to be different?
It doesn't matter whether I agree or disagree with it. That's the law.
No, I mean, but they, like, but they kept in the 71, 203, the prohibition that's been there since 1965.
Yes.
You shall not use public funds, because that was a wise decision on their part. On the legislature said, "You will, you're funded like a high school should act like," as far as funding the scholarships go. So you shall not help anybody, you know, with scholarships with public funds. They left that in the law. It's still there.
It is.
So they've got to mean something different, that a fee has to be different than tuition.
It is different. You have tuition, which is tuition as defined by statute, and you have fees as defined by the board.
So you, you don't agree that it's a distinction without a difference?
It doesn't matter what I-
Terry, clarify me. What are you, what is your point? What are you talking about?
I agree, if I may, if I may. I agree, I mean, you know, it's all money, and it's all being charged, and it's all being paid. But the distinction is important because you can use fees for one thing that you can't use tuition.
Well, then it makes mockery out of the law. I mean, just moxie.
That's not our problem.
It really, it really does. And it does make mockery of it, and it really is our problem, because we're the ones who decide, this board decides whether we're going to have a, whether it's going to be called a fee or a tuition. But it's an hourly charge, and you could call the whole thing a fee, or you could call the whole thing a, you could deal away with fees altogether, call it all tuition, or you could deal away with tuition altogether and call it all fees. We have chosen to divide it, and so have all the other boards across the state, have chosen to call this amount of money a fee, this amount of money a tuition. But there is really no difference, because it's a per-credit hour charge. And it's just the boards that have-
In many states, many states, just because of, because of that distinction we're talking about, and then you can use those fees for anything you want to.
Right.
And that's, that most, most states are, said, "Okay, it's, it's $120 an hour. That money can be used for anything."
If it's a fee.
A fee.
But if it's a tuition, then in Kansas, anyway.
In Kansas, in Kansas, you're-
If we say, "Well, it's going to be $120 credit hour tuition," we can't use that money for anything, except, except what it's intended for. But if we say it's $120 an hour fee, and we're not going to charge tuition, we can use that money for anything, because we've chosen to call, charge, to call that $120 per credit hour a fee. Does everybody understand what, it's just what we've chosen to call it.
This state.
This board, this state, and every other board across the state.
Yes.
You know, it isn't just this board, but every other board across the state has chosen to separate, maybe, $120 may be right or wrong. I, you know, I'm just, that number is to do it out there. But that's the amount of money a student pays to come to the college per credit hour. Call it a fee, call it tuition, call it half and half. But we've chosen to do that, and so has every other college. The reason they've done it, and we've done it, is because we can use the money, the fee money, for a variety of purposes, and we use the tuition money for one purpose alone.
The most wonderful thing about this Ford County, though, is we have the least expensive tuition fees in the state. Out of 19 community colleges, I mean, it's $70 an hour. I've never heard that. I mean, I, no one has, no one in the country has that. It's, that's the lowest I've ever heard.
$70.
So that's a pretty good, tuition fees.
Tuition and fees, you mean?
$70. It's $30 for tuition, $40 for fees.
Yeah.
For Ford County. So we're, we're given, it's, it's a heck of a benefit. And now the state is, you know, with the 155, it's fully funded now, thanks, thanks to, you know, Governor Collier. So y'all got that today. So that's a great thing. So high school students can take technical schools programs for free.
So high school students can take technical school programs for free.
And we need to be pushing that.
You bet.
Yes, we do.
Right now.
I'm impressed.
Well, it's, it's my opinion that they are the same, and that it's illegal to use public funds for non-resident of count, Ford County scholarships. And I, I think we ought to be careful because there is such a thing as misuse of public funds.
I agree that with the effect on students, it is the same, that you're charging students X number of dollars, and we are choosing to divide that. We've chosen to call a pig, a pig and, and the other side of the pig a lamb. So, you know what I mean? That's what we've really done. The money's coming in, it's a per-hour charge. We've decided to call part of it a fee, part of it a tuition.
And that's not the problem. The problem is what you, how you use the two halves.
That's right.
And that's what the law doesn't permit.
The problem is if it's legal, we're doing what, legal?
I don't think we are. That's what I'm saying. I don't think it is legal.
I don't see how it is.
I don't see how you can distinguish the two. And if you can't distinguish the two, there's got to be some reason that the law says you can't use public funds.
I respectfully disagree.
I know. But I would hate to find out that we were wrong.
That'll mean all the colleges are wrong.
I'm going to be interested in knowing what we're wrong on.
That doesn't make me feel any better.
Right.
Well, and that's like accreditation. We may not, we may not agree with some of the things that are on accreditation.
But we have.
But we got to follow, and we don't argue with them.
And they didn't follow some.
I know. That's it, that's in our report.
That's okay with me, too.
All right, so Terry, was that?
Yeah.
The extent of your.
Well, for now, yeah.
Till year thirty-one?
Okay, in my, in my mind, we just completed a circle?
Well, I, I think, I think Terry brings up, you know, a valid point.
Yeah.
That, you know, as we look at this college going forward, I think we need to look at everything possible out there we need to do to differentiate ourselves from, from everybody else, to, to improve what we're doing instead of just continuing down the same path, and that might even be this. So, you know, I, I think it's something for us all to consider. And, like I said, I don't think there's any sacred cows in this mix about the things that we can do, should do, and at least think about. Because, you know, we all want this college to grow and do well, and, and I really think we need to look at the funding and how we go about it. I think the issue in Barton County is something that we all need to pay attention to and, think real hard on it.
And, and I think we're doing, I think with, with Chris, for example, with the foundation, which y'all are aware of, people are starting to open their pocketbooks, you guys, and so that will help with some scholarships. I know we're meeting with different, we met with doctors and others. It's amazing how people are, are, are visiting with us about scholarships, and we even had one individual, can't give you names, but one individual said, look, I'm just going to give you the money. I don't care where it goes, I just give you the money. So that's the kind of, that's the kind of great things that are going on with the foundation. And, and I thank both of y'all, too, for being there the other day. And so, uh, it's just, it's a great opportunity, and this is where we can grow, and then we're going to, we're going to do a, an affair, a black tie affair, and thank y'all for what you're doing. But I, that's the way to start growing this population, and, and the more scholarships, and a scholarship is really a hook. Let's be honest, a scholarship is a hook. And you, you get somebody going to school here and realizing, hey, look, I can go to school and I can, I can actually do it. And that's why, that's why it's so important for us to be doing Ford County and really getting serious about Ford County and making sure these kids have a chance to go here. So, as well as other students.
Yeah, Terry, she's going to be. She's flourishing, Terry.
That's one of the points made, too, in our number one colleague. And the, the accrediting, not accrediting, but the evaluating group who called us number one, that was one of the points they made.
Well, and it's also, as far as education, education is a higher order than, than obviously USDs. And it, it's fun to be sitting by, next to somebody from another county, another state, another country. You, I learn more, I learn more from those people than I learn from, from, from anybody, from any professor. And so that's, that's the fun part of learning from those people about how they live, where they're from, and what's going on in their lives. So it's, we're all one big world.
Gary, you, I've been reading about one of our colleges, but you mentioned Barton County. I think my, I may have missed what.
I said Barton, I meant Butler.
Oh, okay.
I missed hope because.
Which state was Butler, then?
Uh, there, there was a, there was a legislator that, if I'm speaking out of turn, I read it here a couple of weeks ago, it was in the paper, and I think the legislator was talking about, you know, the taxes that the Butler County residents were paying, but yet.
Oh, that's right. Yeah, that's right.
Their tuition or whatever, and there was only a certain amount of the kids were from Butler County, and the rest were from Sedgwick, and so they were un, the Barton County residents were unproportionately subsidizing out of, out of county students versus the rest. Something along that line. I probably butchered that up, but.
It's an old battle there.
It is an old battle.
Yes.
Uh, Gary, can I, Beta, because I attended the oral arguments on school funding that was running through my head today, and they were talking about the legislature, future funding. You know, so it brought me back to the out-of-district tuition. Do you have any idea, or could you get that for the board? What has happened overall to our state credit hour aid since nineteen, since two thousand one, uh, on a, you know, track it as to where it was supposed to be and where it is?
Okay. You're talking about Senate Bill three forty-five?
Yeah, three forty-five.
Okay. We first were receiving per-hour credit hour. Okay. That was when we were under Kansas, no, I'm sorry, State Board of Education. We would get twenty-four dollars from out-of-county, and then the state would match it with twenty-four. So forever out-of-county student, we'd get forty-eight dollars. And then we would get everybody, it was fair because everybody got the same amount of funding you just got funded per credit hour. Then we went to, went under the Board of Regents, and that first year, it went under a grant funding. And the first year, we received maybe three hundred and fifty thousand more than we had under the old law. And it goes through a formula that is so complex, you can't really figure out what's going on.
Well, I was kind of interested in a inflationary, you know, if you go back to two thousand one and.
We can go back and pull that first.
I just kind of wonder how we've kept pace, or they've not kept pace.
We, yeah, it's, it's pretty sad to look at, but I can, I can have that.
Interesting.
We can include that in our retreat in, in July, no, June. I keep saying July, I'm sorry, in June. And we can, we'll go back and kind of show you how that worked, and then where we are today. The only way we can figure it out today is just take what we have actually received and divide it by our credit hour to get, it's going to be around two thousand, I think, of credit hour. But we can, we can follow that through for you, so you can get an idea of.
It's more of a block than, rather than.
It's a block grant.
It doesn't seem to, you know, everybody else is, well, and deservedly, so maybe perhaps, but, you know, it doesn't seem like the community college's credit hour aid is getting any attention from the legislature about increasing it, because all the attention is on K through twelve, which, which is fine. But I, I haven't heard it mentioned in years about increasing our.
Well, we went with the tier of funding, and now you're getting your block grant on the academic side. You're getting your tier of funding, which they never did, you know, we're going with tier of funding, and they never did finance that, so that kind of went down the.
Most, most states are going down, you know. There's cer, there are certain states that they used to be state-funded, now they're state-recognized.
Like Arizona.
We are, what I was reading in the governor's letter is that we, that higher ed is getting eighteen million more dollars next year.
Trying to restore cuts.
Yes.
And papers.
Restoring cuts.
Yes. So it'll be interesting to see how that falls through and how much more we can expect from the state. But yes, Terry, we can go back and do some research.
That'd be good information, I think, for the board.
The S B one fifty-five is something we need to promote.
Yes.
Especially at the high schools.
Yeah, we receive about, that was new funding for us, and I think we average about three hundred and fifty thousand a year on Senate Bill one fifty-five. So that is where the growth needs to come from.
We went, we were at Gray County, talking to Gray County about South Gray and others about, about helping with, with one fifty-five. So along with, we need to be doing that with Ford County and their others. But there's, there's an opportunity for, you know, whether it be plevotomy or EMTs or all those kind of things, so.
Okay. Is there, is there any way that anybody can see to solve this problem in the definition between fees and tuitions? Because, you know, Glenn just gave us this piece of paper that I just highlighted on the first page.
No, I did that.
Oh, you gave it. If you just mark that out and say, that first part, and just say fees, means charge made to, made, paid by students for the privilege of coming, it's the same thing. They have to pay the fee to come, have to pay the tuition to come. I'm on, I'm on.
But it's the legal definition.
It's just because we have decided, and, and maybe we should just, for our own benefit, just call it all fees, and then we can do the heck of whatever we want.
Try it.
They can't do anything about it.
In the journal that we get as trustees from ACCT, did you read the article about the school in California who has no tuition, that, not who, that has no tuition within?
The Marcher. But worry.
Do they just use the fees?
They, they use the fees, but they advertise no tuition, then they help. So it's a, it, it's, it's a model that's working for them. I can't imagine if it would here or not, but there are alternative models out there.
Okay. Well, nonetheless, we have this in front of us today to either act on it or not. So we have Resolution two thousand eighteen dash four with, with the recommended from staff about approving the fees for next year. Do I have a motion to approve?
I move to approve.
Okay.
I second.
I'm going to second. Any further discussion on this?
Do you think this will hurt our enrollment, any administrators? Do you think this'll, raising this will hurt our enrollment from out of state or we're charging?
Okay.
It's a picture all over.
We're actually not raising the fees, or raising the amount being used for scholarships.
Okay, any further, all those in? Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Nay.
Okay. All right, move on to the health insurance renewal.
Okay, um, once again, we are bringing a recommendation to the board not to increase the premiums. This is probably the twelfth or thirteenth year that we've been able to maintain and hold at level. We are probably approaching, for the first time this year, we were short about thirty-two thousand, so it did go into our cash reserves, but we have two point five. And probably next year, if we keep going into reserves, I will recommend to increase, but I don't want to do that. I want to give it another year and see how it plays out. But I feel, I, we're solid, and so I'm just going to recommend that we go with the same premiums that we had last year.
Are we fully self-insured?
No, we're partially self-funded.
Who's your, you have a stop-loss carrier?
Yes, we do.
Who's that?
Brian Hillier is the administrator, and he takes it out for, the new one, I think it says in here is M D U, renewing, renewal with M D U, but he goes out to like ten different companies and gets the best bid for us. Yes. The USD has this, works with Brian Hillier.
Yeah.
But it's, we're, we got two point five, and let's just keep everything the same, no increase to the college or to the employees, so that's my recommendation.
That's amazing, really.
I move we keep the health insurance as is for next year.
Okay, that's interesting. I'm going to second, Florida team. Uh, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, Board Policy four oh four.
Okay, thank you. We're bringing to you tonight for the second reading this policy on international students, and you'll recall when we brought it to you the first time, it was dated, it referred to the North Central Association. We changed it to the Higher Learning Commission, and then we referred to international student specifics that would be listed in the board, or the college catalog, because those are updated each year. Since that time, I didn't have any other suggestions for wording or revision, so we're asking for your final approval so that we can update this one. And I will say that next month, we'll have several policies. Some of them will be extremely important because they will be the reflection from our H L C visit, and some of the recommendations that they gave to us will be bringing to you in the form of policy revisions. So you can look for that next month, and we'll ask for first reading in June and final approval in July on several of them, and then we can take them, the folks that go from here to Chicago for the H L C visit, we'll have them all in place. So you can expect that, but tonight, we're just asking for your final approval on four oh four international students.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a motion to approve Policy four oh four?
So moved.
Second. Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay. Is there any unfinished business that we don't otherwise have? Anything on new business? Um, I would like to bring up something here, if I can, just kind of looking over the financial statements, and then seeing in, in Ryan's presentation, the R S V grants and programs. And I think it would be good if Ms. Killian could come to the board and kind of explain the R S V program and how the funds are working. I had a little bit of question on that. I just think it'd be good information to have. What say the rest of you? Good?
Yeah, information's good.
Okay, all right. Can you get that on the agenda?
Yeah, we'll do it next, next month if that's agreed.
All right. Can I have a motion to approve the consent, the consent agenda?
I move.
Is there a second?
Second?
Okay, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right, now you're up.
Okay, Dr. Noma, how much time do you want?
Probably about six, ten minutes, at the most.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board recess into executive session to discuss an employment application pursuant, applicant, excuse me, pursuant to the personnel matters of non-elected personnel exception to the Kansas Open Meetings Act, K S A seventy-five, forty-three, nineteen B one. The open meeting to resume in this location at seven twenty P M. In addition to the trustees, the president, the college attorney, and Kristi Oshwager should be included in the executive session.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Okay, second. For Sheen, is that a second? Okay, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, okay, we are in executive session. Okay, we are back in session, and we need further time to discuss this matter, so Attorney Curbs, you will take us into.
Yes. Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board recess into executive session to discuss an employment matter pursuant to the personnel matters of non-elected personnel exception to the Kansas Open Meetings Act, K S A seventy-five, forty-three, nineteen B one. The open meeting to resume in this location at seven thirty-five?
Okay. Uh, yes, that would work.
Seven thirty-five P M. Seven thirty-five P M. In addition to the trustees, the president, the college attorney, and Kristi Oshweger should be included in the executive session.
I move.
Second.
I move.
Terry. All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, all right, we are now in executive session.
When I grow up, I want to save lives like a superhero and show up when people needed me.
When I grow up, I want to be a police officer, and I want to protect people, too.
No matter what it is you want to achieve in the future, your journey starts here.
When I grow up, when I grow up, when I grow up. I don't know what I want to do when I grow up, but I know I want to go to college.
Dodge City Community College, adventure awaits.
Okay, we are now back in session, and there was no action taken at the end of our executive session, so with that, meeting is adjourned. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
When I grow up, I want to save lives like a superhero and show up when people needed me.
When I grow up, I want to be a police officer, and I want to protect people, too.
No matter what it is you want to achieve in the future, your journey starts here.
When I grow up, when I grow up, when I grow up.